Well, I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for the time and to share what arguably are the two most significant challenges facing, to provide an update related to arguably the two greatest challenges facing not just Brevard Public Schools, but if we're honest, these are topics of discussion, work groups, task forces, focus groups around these challenges across the country. You cannot pick up an educational professional journal without articles, if not the cover story, around the issues related to recruitment, retention of not just teachers anymore, of all workforce, as well as the conversation I recently added to this morning around student behavior to provide the board an update of the work that's being done as we approach the new school year. But I'd like to begin taking a moment and look back before I give the board a status update of what we are currently engaged in and working on as a district in support of our schools. And that is, let's take a moment and understand what does the data tell us about our current labor crisis across the country? You can see that nationally there were, pre-COVID, 7 million jobs vacant across the country, and today, post-COVID, if you will, approximately over 11 million jobs. In Florida, not quite as drastic of an increase, from 416,000 job openings to 650,000, certainly ominous numbers nonetheless. Interestingly, although the national unemployment rate is 3.6%, here in Brevard, we have a 2.5% unemployment rate, more than a percentage point lower than the national average. And as you can imagine, this presents an unfavorable combination as an employer trying to fill vacant positions. Continuing to look back to where we are today, if you look at the new hires over the last three years across Brevard Public Schools, both in instructional and support positions, you can see that we have overcome some of the increasing numbers of vacant positions by filling an increasing number of those positions. I will not suggest that we have been able to fill all positions at the rate we have wanted to, even ending the school year with both instructional and many support staff vacancies, but we have, if you will, beat the odds a little bit in terms of the hill we've had to climb and the response we've been able to make. And I would suggest that that is a direct result of the recruitment, as well as the retention efforts that we have put into place over the last couple of years through the Human Resources Division, Office of Professional Learning Development, but not the least of which, the commitments that our leaders made across our schools, as well as across our departments, to create and maintain a positive work environment culture, which we know is the number one factor for employee retention. Inclusive of those efforts is increasing the number of job fairs, more than double than what we had in the past in the last 12 months. In addition, we have expanded our recruitment efforts to include paid Facebook and Instagram ads in high-populated cities and regions around the country, introducing Brevard County, as well as Brevard Public Schools, to candidates around the country, and all of the favorable opportunities we have for them as well. In addition, we increased our presence and utilization of a very popular job recruitment website, Indeed. We had utilized it in the past, but we had not leveraged it to the full capacity that we are now in ongoing engagement with them, particularly for support positions. As I met with principals over the last couple few weeks, they echoed their appreciation and the results that were coming from particularly support position applicants through the Indeed employment website. I'd also like to highlight our recent or newer utilization of the employment platform called CIRCA, which specifically targets minority candidates and our commitment to increase the number of minority applicants to our job openings across the district. We've also expanded our presence in local media sources like Vera Voice, Ebony Magazine, as well as we're pursuing increased presence in Aldea Today, which is our local Spanish We have specifically focused on broadening the applicant, or the broadening the pool of applicants as we follow research from our educational partners, TNTP, looking for more non-traditional paths to fill positions. Want to highlight three points on this slide. One, our growing IA program, from instructional assistant to teacher. We have created a very manageable pathway from IA to classroom teacher, and in fact, we have, if you will, promoted nearly 100 IAs from their position as IA to teacher over the last two years. In addition, we have, we are one of the few, surprisingly, and that, we'll leave it that way because we don't want any more competition, one of the few school districts around the country that are partners with the Department of Defense Skill Bridge Program. And it allows us to employ an anticipated military retiree 180 days before their retirement with the school system, providing an internship as a pathway from military service to classroom service. And we have actually employed three Skill Bridge participants in the past and within our schools, and 15 additional active service members are in the process of applying to intern in our schools right now. So that has proven to be a very positive opportunity. In addition, I want to highlight the extra efforts our Human Resources Department have done in reference to the Beacon application process. It is no secret that we receive a bit of criticism over the cumbersomeness of the Beacon online application tool. And sometimes applicants will abandon the effort before they complete it. Well, that has not prevented our HR team, staff to go in, look at applications that are partially completed, and they're actually making direct contact with those applicants to assist them and help them complete the process so that a logistic does not become an obstacle to becoming an applicant. This next slide begins to capture the efforts that have been put forth to elevate the culture that we are committed to creating, maintaining, and sustaining across our different workplaces. I know the board is familiar with our school-based profiles that were completed this year, published and are available both online and in print publication, and been made available to several of our community partners, where we celebrate and accentuate not only the accomplishments of our schools, but the great programs and opportunities across those schools, really capturing what our commitment is to our schools. But also, creating brochures, and I would offer, although I haven't counted, but I'm pretty confident suggesting, we have more highlight videos of our schools across the district than we have ever had before in the history of Brevard Public Schools. Why is that important? Because schools can build those into their websites, they can build that into their own pursuits, and that two- or three-minute capture of the school in living color, if you will, for candidates and community members to understand what is my local school, Jupiter Elementary School, Creole Elementary, or Satellite High School, what is this school about, what does it have to offer? And in two or three minutes, not only do they experience what's there, but they see the real people behind the programs and offering the leadership of our schools. So my thanks to Mr. Brune, his leadership, and continuing to pursue yet a large library of video resources for our community and our partners. In addition, I mentioned earlier our utilization of CIRCA as an employment website tool. We are also, we've increased our engagement, our partnership, our presence with historically black colleges and universities through job fairs. We're actually currently pursuing a field trip for Bethune-Cookman students to come to our schools in the fall so that we get first dibs on those aspiring educators. So they get to see our schools, they get to engage with our kids, they get to talk with the men and women who are already serving kids, and to provide a real-life inspiration. In addition, we have a great partnership with Divine Nine, which you know are the nine prominent paternity sororities of HBCUs. ABSC is the Association of Black School Educators, and we have a local chapter here as well, led by Dr. Karen Ivory as president. And I personally meet with Brevard's APSY to remain engaged and talk about how do we increase applicants of color to the organization, and then how do we also ensure that we are being responsive to those efforts of retention, because we want to keep our quality candidates here in the organization? Now I'd like to take a moment and talk about retention, because in the words of a wise educational leader, the best recruitment strategy is a strong retention strategy. And I know that our union leaders echo that sentiment with us. And so our professional learning and development team committed to strategies of support, connection, as well as growth. And I'll take a moment and share some of those with you now. And in the arena of support, the board is very familiar with the several new health benefit opportunities available to our employees. Surgery Plus, which offers a near-zero cost to employees for routine surgical procedures and provides them almost concierge healthcare service through that process. I see Mrs. Belford shaking her head because she experienced that firsthand, I believe, as her son went through a recent medical procedure, I hope you don't mind me disclosing that, but you have publicly said how positive that that experience was. I'll give a personal testament to Hinge Health. Hopefully, my wife doesn't mind me calling her out. She utilizes Hinge Health herself for some chronic long-term back challenges, and we rarely can start our day without her going online and engaging with her Hinge Health therapy, so it's been beneficial to her as well. My wonderful deputy superintendent, I won't say she's nagged, but nearly, to get me to participate in Hello Heart. I am a proud app owner of Hello Heart on my own smart device and using it to help monitor my health and take advantage of that to be a positive contributor and manager of my own personal health as it benefits the health plan for Brevard Public Schools. So all of these tools become benefits to the employees of Brevard Public Schools, and I would suggest offer effective and beneficial retention opportunities. Beyond that, we also have launched an ambitious wellness campaign over the last particularly 12 months. Poor Antonia, I give her a hard time, I said, "I can't open my email anymore without receiving an update on how I can engage in managing my own personal health and wellness," and what a great problem to have, that there are lots of outlets, whether it's participating in a 300-mile walk challenge, or committing to a 5K, or taking advantage of some healthy online cooking tips. So those resources are available to our employees as well. But more practically, in the classroom, how do we come alongside our teachers as they work through the challenges and demands of instructing, teaching, inspiring, coming alongside knowing and building the esteem of our kids, while also helping them accomplish themselves academically so they can reach their dreams? We know that our teachers need support. They need support in the school, they need support outside of the school. So we have a host of vehicles by which our teachers, particularly our new teachers, can connect with mentors, both in the school as well at the district level. They receive a regular newsletter, they're invited to be part of roundtable discussions, as well as focus groups, and providing them that opportunity of connection with their colleagues that we know is so important, so they never feel like they're on an island by themselves, the only one experiencing the challenges to being a new teacher. Another program that I'm very excited about and really actually sent Mr. Alba, after I became more familiar with it in preparation for this, I said, "How do we scale up this opportunity?" Educators Thriving is a personal well-being area for teachers. It is hosted through Professional Learning and Development. We piloted it at three schools this last year, we're including three more schools, and that's where I told Mr. Alba, "How do we scale it up bigger, faster, and more prevalently for all of our teachers?" But through the program, participants learn concrete strategies to help them avoid and manage the most common pitfalls of the educator experience, such as being overwhelmed, personal neglect, a fixed mindset, unexpected challenges, and feelings of isolation. And between the six sessions, participants had access to online resources, activities to apply research-based strategies to their work in the classroom, as well as that engagement with colleagues throughout the school year. So we're excited about the benefits, as well as the positive response we received from the participants, and looking to expand this opportunity moving forward. In addition, we have provided tutoring opportunities. We've utilized Title II funds to reimburse teachers for critical shortage area certification exams to take that burden and weight off of them and reinforce our commitment to them as they maintain or pursue certification. Feedback is important to us as an organization. I think we've exemplified that more recently through our presentation of survey results, as well as our community, our recent community conversations, but also within the organization of our employees, to ensure that our employees feel connected and have a voice in the direction that we're going as an organization. So our HR department has engaged with our employees at different levels, implementing a newer stay survey that's been conducted to capture reasons why employees choose to stay with the district. And then focus groups will occur this fall to gain a deeper insight into those responses and ensure we keep the practices that have attributed to that, and we reevaluate some of the situations or circumstances that may compromise that moving forward. Then also in the area of connection and building relationships across the district, we actually hosted several educator connection events, from a symposium and dinner to our convening that you see depicted here, as well as celebrating the end of year for first-year teachers. And what a great event where we allow first-year teachers to come together and celebrate the success of "We Made It!" while also being inspired by young emerging teachers of the year who provide messages of encouragement moving forward. Next, we'll see if my technical skills support me here. I think we have a short video that captures some of the experiences our employees have had.
I didn't want to sit in a stuffy office. I really enjoyed the schedule.
I like driving these buses.
If you type person who love kids and can encourage them, you're perfect for the job.
It's a cool job for everybody.
You can't ask for a better working environment.
It's a very rewarding job. You have the opportunity in your life to make a difference. You can't get a better job.
I am a substitute teacher at West Melbourne School for Science. What I enjoy is the connection. I love connecting with kids, whether it be kindergarten or sixth grade, it's just, to me, it inspires me, where I can see something in their eyes, and when you walk around and they're saying your name after they get to know you, that's the part that I adore the most.
The DOD Skilbridge program has really helped secure my future and my career path. I'm super excited that it's in such an inclusive environment. Like I said, everyone here has really made me feel like part of the team, and this program gave me the opportunity to establish myself, introduce my work ethic, and I just, I love it, it's great. Teaching's been a lot of fun.
I feel like everyone who I have spoken with or dealt with, from, like I said, from the school board to my administration, has just been so helpful to me. I have a team that have been there every step of the way, answered every question, helped me out with my lesson plans, stayed after school with me, some even come on the weekends and help me when I'm here, and I just know teachers from other places who didn't have that kind of help or support, so that definitely just made it a better experience for me overall.
It's such a rewarding job. There's a lot of good things that come with it, and I would really urge them to go into teaching.
Just one of the many examples of our communications office, Dr. Brune, in putting together a video that captures the experience our employees are having across every possible position, and really accentuating the positive culture that our leaders across the district are committed to for all of our employees. Kind of as we wrap up this part of the presentation, I want to highlight not only the recruitment, the retention, the support and connection opportunities, but also what about growth opportunities within the organization? The board is aware of our growing career ladder opportunities on our website for our employees, where they can look ahead, they can look toward, okay, what might be next for my professional journey within Brevard Public Schools? And we provide additional supports and resources, whether that is help getting through a GED or taking advantage of adult ESOL courses or adult ed education courses, even within our own system. We pour into our insight survey feedback from employees, and we take their voice and their feedback and build it into our priorities moving forward. Again, the board is aware of our real deep dive into our survey results across the entire organization as an integral part of our strategic planning process just a couple weeks ago in the revised review retreat of strategic plan. We know that every single employee of Brevard Public Schools right now is a potential recruiter for Brevard Public Schools. And so I would make an appeal to all of our employees listening and who may listen later, and ask that you take on the role, the challenge, if you will, to be a recruiter for Brevard Public Schools, and take the opportunity to talk to friends, neighbors, those in your sphere of impact, and talk with them about being a part of Brevard Public Schools. We have enormously positive story to tell about employment opportunities here in Brevard Public Schools. And so I'd like to take now, before I address student behavior, a few minutes to talk about our current efforts toward recruitment as we move forward right now in preparation for this school year. In reviewing feedback from our administrators, you've seen the vacancy rate we've had for the last few years, but what has become a more recent reality and, quite frankly, challenge in our workforce employment certainly is the vacancy rate, but that's almost not as concerning as the new vast reduction in number of applicants. We can't fill positions that we don't have applicants for. And so in recognition of a reducing pool of candidates or applicants for the positions that we have available, we are, if you will, putting together a full-court press of recruitment over the coming weeks to fill positions as we near the start of the school year. It begins with, what do we have to recruit with? And I would suggest we've got a really favorable, good story to share. Beginning teacher salary will be at least $47,500 for the coming year. We've already negotiated, been ratified and board-approved. For a new hire teacher, they will be receiving up to a $2,400 bonus this school year, nearly approaching a guaranteed $50,000 a year salary for the beginning teacher this year. We are working toward full benefits eligible by August 1st. Currently, benefits aren't eligible until your 46th day of employment, and we are accelerating that and making benefits available as soon as we can possibly get them onboarded. We're continuing to cover all onboard costs for employees. Teachers who pursue teaching at a Title I school have enormously favorable opportunity for student loan forgiveness through the federal student loan forgiveness program. And let's not forget that it is a 10-month work calendar with four weeks guaranteed off throughout that year, a week at Thanksgiving, yes, that week is now built into our calendar after we had such a positive experience with it last year, two weeks at winter break, and then the additional spring break as well. In addition, we have additional days to pre-planning this year built in for training, professional development, introduction to our new math curriculum, as well as English Language Arts and Math at Secondary, so teachers can receive hourly rate of pay for anywhere from two to four additional workdays before the school year starts. And for support staff, let me loudly and clearly testify, every position in Brevard Public Schools will have no less than a $15 an hour rate of pay effective July 1st. Now that comes with a caveat, I'm feeling my friend across the room there, Dr. Thede, reminding me, make sure you give the caveat. The state has only required that implementation by October 1st. We have made the organizational decision to put it into place by, excuse me, July 1st, but we will need time to implement that very manual, laborious process of payroll changes, and will not potentially be implemented until October 1st, but will be retro to the first day of employment up to July 1st. That is inclusive, that includes our current existing employees. There have been several questions around, we know that the beginning salary is going up to 15, but does that include me if I'm already onboard? And the answer is yes, it does. We are anticipating going back to the negotiation table with our 10-10 union leaders as we continue to work through that process, but that much, we are guaranteed, everything that I have just said. Again, benefits eligible August 1st, onboarding costs paid for, and I've already referenced the advancement opportunities through the career ladders. For our bus drivers particularly, paid training while they obtain the certification of a CDL license, the CDL test is paid for, full benefits by August 1st, and a flexible work schedule for our bus drivers. I have highlighted and intentionally spotlighted three particular positions that we are prioritizing and focused on here in the coming weeks, and that is the teacher, the position of teacher, instructional assistant, and bus driver. Those are the direct student contact positions that we have across the organization. Please, don't let me suggest that every position in this organization is critical to the support and development of our kids, but we are prioritizing and focusing on those direct student-related positions right now, and really raising the touch of how we're communicating that. So you're probably asking, okay, well, we've got a great story, but how are we getting the story out in different ways than we have done in the past? Mr. Brune and his department is preparing for social media, radio, TV, paid advertising of our employment opportunities. In addition, he's developing a printed flyer highlighting all of those things and more that I've just spoken to. I will have that ready here by Thursday, because on Thursday I have already scheduled three district-wide regional conversations with our faith-based partners in education and my faith-based ambassadors in education. We have We have well over 125 faith-based leaders that are part of those two vehicles. I met with my principals this morning, and I challenged them, in addition to those that I have on my distribution list, are there other pastors that are connected with you, perhaps even your own personal, that you want at this conversation? Give them my contact information, and we'll make sure they have an invitation. And at this meeting I have with them on Thursday, I'll be making a very specific and explicit ask, and that is to commit three to five minutes from the pulpit on the next two Sundays at your church, your synagogue, your temple, place of worship, highlighting the employment opportunities and the favorable story we have to share across our community. Because we've got workforce solutions right here in our front and backyards of Brevard County, and people who have a vested interest, not only in our community, but would have a vested interest in our kids. And ask them to make those opportunities available and provide them as many flyers as they think they may need to help us get the word out. In addition, we are putting out a press release about our hourly rate of pay for all employees, as well as sending a individual letter to every 10-10 employee current, making sure that they understand that if they're below $15 an hour now, it will be going to 15 effective July 1. We're powering up fingerprinting and HR assistance, both increased hours, as well as those follow-up calls that I've alluded to already. And we will follow up. In addition, I made contact with Eastern Florida State College, and I have to give shout-out and props to Dr. Michael Kudor. Been a longtime colleague, quite frankly, friend, partner in education, committed to this community. I called Mike and I said, "Mike, I need your help. I need in quick fashion who your graduates were in May, and if you know who your graduates are in August, can I get a data list, a list of all of those graduates, both associates of arts, as well bachelor's degree-earning students?" Because here's what I want to do. I want to do you a favor and hopefully do me a favor. One, I want to contact them directly and let them know about the very positive, favorable employment opportunities here in Brevard Public Schools across different positions. How does it help you? Well, you can bolster great career opportunities from classroom to workplace through a degree in Eastern Florida State College as we reach out to them. And he said, "That's a no-brainer. Let me see what I can..." I said, "Mike, I need quick turnaround time. I need it by Wednesday of this week." Mike had it to us yesterday. And so I got to give shout-outs to Mike. It's a comprehensive list with contact information, and we are in the process right now of reaching out to them, both in mail and by phone, to make these opportunities available to our students. I also challenged my principals this morning. Right now is the time to take a moment and pause. Your teachers have been gone for half the summer, and to remind them of the valuable impact that they have in students' lives, and that not only are you looking forward to a great year, you're looking forward to that teacher coming back and ensuring that every student is known, valued, and inspired, and making sure that they're aware of the compensation agreements we've already made with returning teachers. Teachers in their one to seven years will be receiving a $3,400 bonus distributed throughout the school year. And teachers in their eighth-plus year will be receiving a bonus of $4,400 distributed across the year. And in addition, taking a specific look of which of your teachers entered their 11th year of service or completed their 11th year, and make sure they know that they're eligible, they're now eligible for the $1,200 longevity supplement that is not only recurring, but retirement-eligible. And so our principals are doing that work right now, to connect with their teachers, to ensure that we are taking advantage of those retention strategies and opportunities, and making sure our teachers are connected to their schools and to the kids that they have served, and we want them to continue to serve.